The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now being called to order. We will have an invocation by Councilman Fleury and Councilman Butcher will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Oh God, we come to you today with thankful hearts. We give praise for this beautiful weather. Thank you, oh Lord, to this city. And I thank you for the mayor and the administration and for the council and all the workers that deliver the services day by day. We ask that you protect them, keep them from all harm and danger. Go with us and forgive us of our sins and, Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag and put your hand over your right hand. Over your right, over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilman Brackford.
President.
Councilman Nicholson.
President.
Councilman Butcher.
President.
Councilman Corbin.
Here.
Here. There are motions to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and also the city council organization. They've been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Bradford. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests at this time?
Uh...
Councilwoman Fuller.
Um, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Gregory Callenberg with the Louisiana Prize Foundation.
Um, can you guys hear me okay? I just wanted to thank you all for having us here. I want to congratulate everybody who's sitting up at the podium, a lot of new faces. I also want to tell you that I'm extremely nervous. I usually do talks with tequila in my hand and they have it back there with the security guard, so I'm going to try to do this the best way I can. My name is Gregory Callenberg and I am the founder and the executive director of the Prize Foundation. We do a number of competitions here in Shreveport, the Startup Prize, Film Prize Junior, the Music Prize, and the Food Prize, but I'm here to invite you all to our kickoff for Louisiana Film Prize VIII at the Robinson Film Center tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. What is interesting about the Film Prize and what is essential for you guys to know because we are all in this city together wanting to make it better is that is what me and my team are focused on. We're focused on creating a bigger, bolder, more creative Shreveport, Louisiana. And while a lot of people try to put film into a creative arts bucket, we think every day about economic development. And to give you an example of that, over the years, the Film Prize has actually yielded over 600 short films made by people from all over the country. They come here, they stay in our hotels, they eat in our restaurants, they hire our workers. They hire our workers to the tune of 4,000 local workers have worked on Film Prize films up to this point. And from the economic development perspective, we have done, you're going to see a sheet that's actually some facts, but we have done over $15 million in economic development. And that's just from a film festival and competition that we do here in Shreveport. But what's more than that is that the Film Prize has created a beacon that is drawing people here that are starting to look at Shreveport in a different way. And that's what we're about. Because when you look at the Film Prize and you look at what I started eight years ago, it's a very, very selfish endeavor. I want to build something that helps build a city that will attract my children back to my city. And so I am appreciative of everything the city of Shreveport does for us. I encourage you guys to come down to the Film Prize kickoff tomorrow from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. and to really feel the energy and vibe of what this city is trying to become. Right now, we have a little something for you guys. We have some gifts from, this is Stephen Knight and Chris Holland from my office. And again, just a little fact sheet. But again, thank you so much for everything. It's a little free swag for you guys. And again, that event is basically open to everybody, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and has a great sort of vibe, a great spirit, and a great energy. Thank you guys so much.
So Gregory...
Yes.
So this is the beginning of the film season for the year, correct?
Yes. So basically tonight, when, or tomorrow night, when we kick off the Film Prize, that allows filmmakers from all over the country to come here to Shreveport, Louisiana, start hiring local workers, start taking advantage of our city and start putting dollars into the places and make our city look like the glorious place that I know it can be.
Okay, now outside of your selfish reasons for wanting this and knowing that it has a huge impact on the economic development for the city and just our general morale, can you give me any narrative from someone other than you about the feedback that you get about the festival and people's perceptions of our city?
Um, I will tell you that if any of you are having a bad day in Shreveport, Louisiana, go to a Louisiana Film Prize set and talk to the filmmakers who have traveled here from as far as New York, Los Angeles, and last year we even had two filmmakers from Toronto, Canada. And they will tell you how amazing it is, the city that you live in, how lucky it is that we're all here together.
Thank you so much, Gregory. I'm looking forward to being there tomorrow and to seeing how the films come in this year and seeing what this does for our creative class in our city.
Yeah, thank you so much. And to end, we do our usual call to arms. You guys ready? On three, one, two, three. Viva the Film Prize!
Thank you, Councilwoman Fuller. Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to acknowledge the presence of one of our former council members, but I don't see him now. This was, Councilman Corbin, was he, did he leave?
I think he stepped out.
He's here over there.
Oh, he's over there. I still don't see him. He was behind that pole. Anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge him and it's good to see him this New Year. Happy New Year, Councilman. That was it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other council member? Mayor Perkins, do you have any awards or recognitions at this time?
Uh, I'd just like to tell everybody happy new year, who wasn't with us yesterday for work session. And also just to reiterate to the council, happy new year as well. I look forward to working with each and every one of you and making sure we push our city forward. And to Mr. Callenberg and Film Prize, thank you so much for what you do for our community, what you do with economic development, you know, aside from everything you do with just increasing the morale of our community. So thank you for what you do. Let's make Film Prize even better. All right.
All right. Any other communications from the mayor's office?
Uh, not at this time. I'll deal with it when we go through the agenda.
Okay. All right. Does any member have any concerns or questions relative to property standards? Yeah, Mr. Green, ready? Thank you, Mr. Green, for your service. Ms. Jones has already emailed the Revenue Connection Plan. The city attorney passed after she served in front of the city attorney. Okay. And in the public hearing? No. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added?
There's none, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, yesterday there was some discussion regarding the report from the clerk with the mayor's recommendations for appointments. There was some discussion, but I mentioned yesterday that I felt compelled to make a motion that we would suspend the rules to take, to add some items of the clerk report to the agenda. So I'd like to move at this time that we suspend the rules to add these items to the agenda.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green to add some matters of, some appointments to the agenda.
Councilman, the proper motion is to suspend the rules first and not to add. That would have to be a separate motion and votes.
To suspend the rules? Yes. All right. I, um, I say those comments. We can vote on suspending the rules. You know, I did want to have some discussion. We'll take that back. I understand where, where we are with this, this process is, and I do want the mayor to understand that everyone, I think, here will and does understand the importance of the confirmation. And I get both sides of where we want to have time to vet and have others, if other concern is, there are some concerns, and if there are some concerns from the public, then they will have time to address those to their council member or to the mayor's office also. So...
Let me just make a statement, Mr. Chairman. And I do not intend to create any confusion regarding this. My only, my only reason for doing this is that it's something we've afforded past mayors. There will be times that subjects will come up, issues will come up that will require our immediate attention. It's not unusual for us to proceed in this manner. It was stated, and again, I'm not speaking on the appointments, I'm just speaking on the process, and the process is that when there's a situation where we want to allow the mayor or the council in that matter, the necessary tools or personnel to move forward in their duties and responsibilities, that we have given that great consideration. And that's, that was my premise of doing this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have Councilman Nicholson and then Councilman Green.
Mr. Chairman, I've explained during the work session yesterday my reasons for declining to vote to suspend the rules in this case. As I indicated yesterday, I have every reason to believe that the nominees the mayor has presented to us will be confirmed, but I do not believe there is an emergency or an urgency that necessitates an immediate confirmation without the two-week delay that the rules of this council require. And for that reason, as I indicated yesterday, I will oppose this motion. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just, yesterday I just listened, but I discovered that some things are lawful but not expedient, some things expedient but not lawful. I think that affording the mayor the opportunity, he's got a burning fire in him that has been there. We all support him and he's ready to do his job, he's ready to get his team together. And of course, the vetting and all of that, I didn't know about vetting until the last judge confirmation on TV. And we went through a whole process. I've never witnessed, this is my third trip, I've never witnessed this before, out of all of the mayors that we've served with, that you go through a vetting process, always saying that since we have the power, since we have the power to hold it up, that we'll hold it up. Are we saying that within two weeks? What if your whole district say that they don't like the picks that the mayor made? Are we going to say, well, we're going to throw them out? We're not going to deal with them? What are we going to say? I just think that if we are true to our promise, just think if we were elected and we had to go through a vetting process, how would we feel? I just think the mayor ought to be given the opportunity that the citizens of this city has given him, vote on his team today. If there's something wrong, then that's for the police to deal with, not for us to do. I believe if the mayor has confidence in him, then we ought to have confidence in the mayor. We supported him, we voted for him. And I just think that we ought to, as a council, say, hey, mayor, okay, we're going to do this, we're still going to do our vetting, but at the end of the day, if we're going to vote two weeks from now for these folk, you know, we, four votes can change the street one way. Five votes, then they can override a veto. But I just think that this needs a, from my understanding, from right, Mr. Thompson, does this need a unanimous vote?
To suspend the rules, all it requires is a two-thirds vote, but to place it on the agenda would require unanimous vote.
Right. Thank you. And I just think it's unfair for us to hold him up, to say, okay, Mr. Mayor, we with you, but we just want to do this, then there's some people in my district that I just got to ask them, is it okay? I don't think that's fair. That's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Okay. I got Councilman Butcher and then Councilwoman Fuller.
I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Nicholson on this. However, I want to tell the mayor that I have no particular problem with, with any of his nominees for these positions. And, and I agree, I mean, he, he won, he's the, he's the mayor. And I think we had a conversation at one point that he's driving the boat. But I also think that for me, my constituents are driving the boat, and I believe that the two-week period may not be a bad idea in order for them to be able to voice their opinion. Councilman Green mentioned, you know, what are we going to do if all our constituents come up and say they don't want them? Well, if the majority of my constituents say no, then I'm probably going to vote in the, you know, unless I have information that they don't have. There's a couple of other issues, and I think we talked yesterday about the chief technology officer, that there's a few things that need to be cleaned up. I'm 100, 100% for Keith in this position. I can't think of anybody else for the position, but I think that we need to clean it up as far as the job description and what his job will be. And, you know, there's just several things that we need to clean up on that. And I think the two weeks would not be a bad idea for that. So I want, I want the mayor to know that I support everything that he's doing. He is elected, this is his, this is what his job description is, but our job description is to be legislators and to answer to our constituents. And I just feel like the two-week process would be, would be in the best interest of my district. Also, right now, I'm assuming that everything that's going on, it looks like to me that the city attorney's office is handling things quite well, at least my interaction with them. And I just, I feel like that two weeks is not going to make a whole lot of difference. So I just wanted to be on the record with that. I don't have any problem at this point. Now, I might after the two-week vetting, but at this point, everything that I've seen and read on each, all three of these, I would have no reason to vote against them. But I would like to hear from my constituents on it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with Councilman Butcher. And I'll add that I think was really unfortunate that the first time that you can recall here, and Councilman Green, about a vetting process was with the recent Supreme Court judge. And that concerns me for, for all of us here, especially if you thought that that was a reason to forego a vetting process, because I always think that that's a reason to absolutely have one. I'm completely confident in your selections. I've overlooked them myself. I've spoken with Councilman Nicholson and I said, well, you know, we've had resumes, we've had press releases, we've had some time to, to overview these candidates that we could confirm. But I've also heard from my constituents that they feel more comfortable if we did have the two weeks. Additionally, I ran on a platform of transparency and community engagement, and I need an opportunity to engage with my community. Thank you.
Councilman Green.
No. What I was saying, I've been here, this is my third trip. During the previous times that I was on the council, we did not go through a vetting process. The mayor brought their representation and their recommendation, and what happened was we voted on them. We'd never had a situation, when I was a councilman, that this body went through that process. That, that's what I said, not, not because of, of the Supreme Court. On this particular body, previous mayors never went through this process.
You, you mentioned it.
Excuse me, I'm still talking.
Oh, okay.
You have to fly.
So therefore, the last council, when we were at their work session, they suspended the rules, they went through the budget, they did this, they did that, they did everything that you could dream of on the last meeting. And so I just watched the process. Of course, my only concern is this. I think the mayor is ready for his team to move forward. Just my personal thinking, not bothering anybody else, this is just my personal way of thinking, that he has a burning fire in him, he's ready to put his team together. And I just think to him, it is unfair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Counsel, I had counsel and Butcher first, and then I had Councilwoman Fuller.
I just want to, want to follow up just, just for a second on that. I believe that the charter was written and it allowed that as a safeguard, and I see no reason for us to suspend it. Every mayor, I believe, has, has a burning desire to get their team in there. But I also believe that the safeguards were put into the charter, and it's our duty to, to, I don't want to say vet these people, because like I said, I've already read about them, but I would like to have some more time for our constituents. And again, it's, it's nothing about the mayor and it's nothing about, you know, but we, we all talked about during this campaign season, I believe everybody in the audience heard it over and over again, transparency, 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 transparency. And I think that's what we're, we're trying to do here. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you. I'll just add that those safeguards are there so that we can have consistency in the way that we, that we rule and that we should be starting off not by mimicking what we've seen for a generation, but by actually trying to do something with consistency. And we have an opportunity to start that right now.
All right. And I agree, I just believe, I do think that we have those procedures in process for a reason. I think we should, do need to go by them, but I did have, my vote would be just for one at this particular time, so although this may not, may or may not pass, it's just for that one, one that I felt like there may be of a need and the others maybe can't wait that time. If there's nothing else to be said, let's go ahead, call for the vote. That motion fails, three to four. Mr. Thompson, there was no legislation to be added. We have the following request to speak.
I can't help but think you should be sitting here. I'm very happy where I'm sitting.
Mr. Corbin, you know this well, but I've been instructed by the chair to ask you to state your name and address and to remind that you have three minutes.
Michael Corbin, External Affairs Manager for SWEPCO, 428 Travis Street. Mayor Perkins, council, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I'm here to speak about ordinance 131, telecommunications changes. My understanding in talking with staff is that we're just getting our ordinance in line with current FCC rulings and legislation. SWEPCO is very concerned about both moving forward with 5G and small cell as, as much as we are the safety of anybody who is working on our poles and the integrity of our network. One of the things that we'll be doing later this week is meeting with staff to be sure that the application process involves SWEPCO and our folks. If somebody from one of the communications companies wants to put equipment on our poles, we need to be able to identify that pole, give some approvals there. So we're just going to be doing some fine tuning over the next couple of weeks, and I will probably be back to report that progress to you. But just wanted to give you an update on that and appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Good to see you, councilman. So, so utilizing your, your poles and some other equipment is, is a possibility?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Have you been approached already with...
My understanding is there have been a number of applications submitted. Those applications go to the MPC first. What we're trying to do is be sure that we have a step in that process where if somebody wants to put an antenna on a pole at 123 Easy Street, that our staff has had a chance to look at that pole, look, be familiar with the equipment, so there's not a safety hazard involved.
Good. And I, and I appreciate that because we, we discussed these possibilities, these small cells going up all over, and we didn't want them to cluttering up neighborhoods. And I think utilizing some current, current equipment would be advantageous for, for us, and I welcome SWEPCO being available to assist us in that.
I think this all fits in with, with Mayor Perkins' initiatives for moving our city forward with technology, and, and we're certainly not going to get in the way of that. We just want to be sure that everybody's safe while we're doing it.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Butcher.
Real quick.
Mike?
Councilman, uh, from what, from what I read, there was an issue with power interruption on one of these in Baton Rouge. Was that correct? So I think coordination between SWEPCO and these, these communications companies is very important. So I hope that with this new legislation or the amendments to it, that we'll be able to keep everybody's power on, because from what I understand, it's happened in the past that there's been some, some breaches and things like that.
Our, our goal is to keep the lights on.
Right.
All right, Councilman Corbin, we have one more. Mayor Perkins.
Yeah. Councilman, have you, is SWEPCO working with any other municipality right now in kind of a partnership with hosting these towers on your, on your poles?
We are not. This is all kind of new to our service area, but we are looking at what else is going on in, in East Texas and in Arkansas and gathering some information on that. And I think we'll be having a conversation with you specifically in the next few weeks as well.
So yeah, I, I hope to meet with you, myself, the city engineer. We've looked at best practices, again, as you pointed out, outside of your service area, and it's, it's just a lot neater. Aesthetics is a concern that myself and the councilmen brought up yesterday. It's a lot neater if it's already on some pre-existing poles. So I look forward to having that conversation with you and trying to figure out a partnership so we're not cluttering our streets with multiple towers, yes, intersections and just, you know, not looking back, but providing that service to our citizens at the same time.
Sounds great.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. That's it for...
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There are no items on the consent agenda. Mr. Thompson, can we continue with items to be adopted, please?
Well, there are a couple of items on the consent agenda. Just a note to the council members, this can be, they can be voted on with one motion. There are two items on there. They are placed on there by the staff. However, if any member wants to remove an item, just let us know and it will be removed. So the two items that are on there are resolution number one and resolution number two. So if there are no concerns, a motion to adopt the consent agenda would be in order.
That's a move, Mr. Chairman.
All right. They're moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green. Please vote. That motion carries with seven.
Under introduction of ordinances...
Can I comment, really? Can I comment, Chairman? On, on the international airport front, there is a piece of news that I'd like to add to notify the city council and, again, the citizens of Shreveport. Our airport director resigned this afternoon, so there are, there is some turnover that's going to be happening at Shreveport Regional, hopefully soon Shreveport International over the next couple of weeks. So just wanted to give everybody a heads up about that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, when you said today, effective today or effective?
Uh, well, yeah, it was, the top of his resignation said effective today, so. But we already have an interim that we've chosen. We'll share details after the meeting.
That's fine. I just... Did he get notice or did he give his actual resignation?
No, he gave his actual resignation today, this afternoon, you know, shortly before the council meeting. So again, I don't really want to elaborate. I haven't been able to speak with him since, so.
So we have somebody in place to...
Yes, yep, we've already taken care of that. That's what we were working on prior to, so somebody's already gotten a ship at the airport, so.
Good.
And I'll be coming to you with some potential changes that we might need to make in the interim to make sure both of our, our airports are operating, fully operating.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Perkins, for the transparency on that. Mr. Thompson, will you please proceed?
Under introduction of resolutions, we have one, resolution number four. It authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the African-American Celebration Corporation.
Move introduction?
Second. They're moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green for the cooperative endeavor agreement. If there is no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
There are two ordinances that can be introduced. Ordinance number one suspends the effects of certain sections of the code, specifically Ordinance number one suspends the effects of certain sections of the code, specifically provisions in chapter 10, chapter 62, and any applicable provisions of the Shreveport Unified Development Code relative to allowing alcoholic beverages in open containers at Mardi Gras parades. Ordinance number two suspends the effects of chapter 50 of the code, specifically provisions relative to prohibiting the operation of certain motorized vehicles on property located adjacent to the Red River at Mardi Gras parades.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Booch. Ordinance one and two. If there's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven.
Under ordinances on second reading and filed passage, ordinance number 79 has already been postponed. No action is necessary. It will come up on February the 12th. Ordinance number 129 authorizes a purchasing agent to advertise for and solicit sealed bids to sell to the highest responsible bidder surplus city-owned immovable property and all improvements located at 2890 Sutherland Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118, commonly referred to as the former Fire Station 17.
A move for adoption?
Second.
They're moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green for 129.
Mr. Chairman?
I thought that, yes.
No, you go ahead.
I was, I thought Councilman Flur wanted to speak.
You want to speak on that?
Okay.
Counselor Bradford?
No, no, I was just wondering, have there any inquiries regarding this property to anybody knowledge already?
I think it was to.
It has been?
It has been to.
Even though, Mr. Chairman, I speak?
Please, sir.
It's been appraised, I think, 260,000. I'm reluctant to vote for this. I had postponed it before because this is part of our history there in the Southern Hills. That was the original town hall for Summer Grove before it came into the city. But as I know, that progress must move on and move forward, so I'll let the vote take its place and whatever happens, happens.
Well, I mean, I understand the sentimental.
No, it's history.
Well, history, but I mean, but we having to maintain it, all right?
I understand. We've been maintaining it. It's pretty bad shape. It's remarquably fire station.
Right. Okay. I hear you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If there's no further discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six. One against.
Ordinance 130, amends the Metropolitan Planning Commission's fee schedule for the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code relative to fees for applications related to properties within historic preservation overlay districts and for applications related to a preliminary site plan and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Show move.
They're moved by Councilman Green. Seconded by Councilman Bradford for 131, 130. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 131 revises chapter 105, the wireless telecommunications facilities for the City of Shreveport for the code of ordinances relative to small wireless facilities. There are two amendments that have been submitted. I understand that only amendment number two is to be voted on. Amendment number two addresses general administrative matters. Number two, it brings the city's current ordinance in compliance with the latest federal communications commission's orders. And number three, to the extent permitted by law, it retains the city's right to require underground equipment. And number four, it requires co-location when practicable and if it will be good for aesthetic purposes.
Show move on amendment two.
Second.
They're moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Council, Vice Chair Nicholson. If there's no discussion, we're only voting on number two. Am I correct?
Amendment number two.
Amendment number two. Motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would adopt number 31, 131, as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Booch to amend Motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would adopt number 31, 131, as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Booch to amend Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
The next ordinance, 132, is a zoning matter, case number C-84-18. It rezones property located on the north side of Buncombe Road, approximately 200 feet west of Roseville Drive from R17 Single Family Residential District to R1 Rural Agricultural District.
Show move? Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Green. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Thompson?
Ordinance 133 is a zoning matter, case number C-86-18. It rezones property located on the west side of Broad Acres Road, approximately 280 feet south of Westport Avenue from I1 Light Industrial District to R17 Single Family Residential District.
Show move? Second.
Moved by Councilman Booch and seconded by Councilman Green, 133. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 134 concerns zoning case number C-87-18. It rezones property located on the south side of Shreve Park Drive, approximately 150 feet east of Buncombe Road, Shreveport, from R17 Single Family Residential District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Show move? Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Green on 134. No discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 135 concerns case number C-89-18. It rezones property located at 6815 West 70th Street from I2 Heavy Industrial District to I1 Light Industrial District.
Show move? Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote on 135. That motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, what y'all doing over there?
Shreveport is open for business. Mr. Thompson, is there any table legislation?
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
That's what y'all said. Y'all were hearing the move and Shreveport open for business.
We need to shed a little bit.
We have no property standards appeals. Are there any other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
No, we have none, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committee? I think you all should have received, hopefully, your appointments to the board.
Yeah, you have them on our desk.
Okay.
Very good appointments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Thompson, is there a class report?
Mr. Chairman, we have received from the mayor appointments for the city attorney, the chief technology officer, and smart cities director, and the bureau chief of special programs. And they were discussed yesterday. The next administrative conference will be Friday, January the 18th, at 2019. And immediately after this meeting or at 4:00, we'll have to wait until 4:00, there will be an executive, there will be a special meeting to determine whether or not we go into executive session in order to discuss some matters related to Grigsby and Associates.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the concern of Councilman Nicholson regarding the establishment of a new position, is the council prepared to deal with that and which would be the process? Do we need to make any type of revisions to add a new position or, because he wants the job description noted?
There's a, the description, any new function can be added by the council and it would be done by ordinance.
By ordinance?
Yes. And we could draft the amendment, I mean, the ordinance, if we had all of the information about it precisely, what the new function will be, what it will do, and so forth.
I think the mayor's office can.
Yeah, we can get you, yeah, we can have that legislative, legislation drafted for you. But I mean, while I'm taking a time to comment, the new position is just a change in title. We're not adding a new position. We're simply changing the title from IT director is now going to be known as the chief technology officer. And the IT director's title now is just going to that deputy position. So it's actually, we're actually saving money if you look at the pay scale now. So I don't want anybody to think we're creating a new position and we're paying a new position. We're actually saving money within the IT department. The chief technology officer will be responsible for IT and more strategic technology initiatives like smart city initiatives and various other projects within, technology projects within the mayor's department in building a bridge between the local tech sector. So we are not creating another position. We're changing the title and we will get those duties and responsibilities to you in legislation.
Will that, Mr. Thompson, to your understanding, be a one reader or two reader?
It would be an ordinance, so it'll be a two reader.
A two reader. Okay. All right. I don't think Mr. Butcher is going to wait until that's adopted.
No, no, I just think that for housekeeping purposes, we need to make sure that we have the exact thing in place. I think.
That will be in front of us at the time?
Right, exactly.
Okay. Yeah. Let me see. And I, it was, it was.
It was me.
It was, okay, I apologize. I thought it was.
Same, same position, just different, maybe different title and maybe a couple of different duties.
Responsibilities.
So basically, you're just adding that he is in charge of the current IT director, who is now the deputy IT director, encompassing these other duties as far as smart city and things like that.
Yes.
I think that's a real easy way to clean it up. And now, from this point forward, we have that there and I just think that it's in our best interest to have it in place.
Yeah, agree.
All right. I did, is that the end of the class report? I'm sorry.
It is.
All right. I did see Ms. Creel out in the audience. I did want to acknowledge your presence and thank you for attending today. I did miss out on, so it's not, okay. But that one is, okay. I just wanted to let Sammy Mears know that I did not omit you earlier, okay? All right, we're going to take that up on the next round on public comments. Mayor Perkins, did you have any additional communications at this time?
No.
No? Does any council member have any additional communication at this time?
That's right.
Councilman Green?
Mr. Mayor, did you have given any thought about the sign that we talked about, about doing a sign about open for business?
I have not looked into that, but as I just stated about the IT budget, I'm trying to save money. So maybe we'll just put a banner on the website or something. It's cheaper that way.
Get some news.
But Shreveport, yeah, Shreveport is open for business as the council has stated and, you know, I'm saying that right now, too.
Thank you.
All right. Counselman Booch?
Okay, just real quick, we discussed yesterday about the police and fire. Is there something in the process with that? Could you just let me know?
Yeah.
Where we're at? Because I really, we set that benchmark and, I mean, I'm not sure we have the money. I mean, I'm, but at least we need to start the discussion. And if you just kind of keep me informed on where we are, at least within the first quarter, I'd like to be able to try to get us close to that Bojer City number, if at all possible, if we can find the funds. And I understand that you're just getting into the budget just like we are, so I'll understand. But if you kind of keep me informed on that, I'd appreciate it.
I will do that. And that's an overlapping campaign promise that we both made to our constituents. I'm well aware of the regional rate. I've gotten the numbers from the police union and talked to the police chief about it on where we need to go. I've looked, myself and the CAO, we're looking at the previous audit compared to some of the other numbers that are published in the budget and trying to figure out what's the best way to not only meet that fiscal benchmark, but also make sure that we're healthier fiscally as a city.
Right.
Some of the reserve numbers are low to me, so I will be proposing some action in the very, very near future on how we can meet that and, again, become more healthy.
Right. And I understand, like I said yesterday, that we have a very low reserve. I don't think it meets any of our expectations that we want right now. I was, unless I misread this, it was my first report, I said we had a little bit extra in sales tax collection, which was, which I think is good, but I hate to see us take everything that we've got and not have any reserve. But I just appreciate your willingness to look into that. It's something that we, like I said yesterday, that we all ran on and I wanted to hit it on the first meeting where we all know we're on the same page.
Yeah. Yeah, and that sales tax revenue is great, but, you know, we have to make sure we're being.
I agree.
Better, fiscally responsible.
Fiscally responsible.
So, yeah, we're looking into some ways to make sure we can potentially create some more revenue to put us in a better position in the long term.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Counselman Booch. Counselman Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, Mr. Mayor, wondering, in regards to sanitation, public solid waste, are we caught up now?
I got, in my training meeting yesterday, our staff meeting yesterday, we were caught up as of yesterday. And my emails have very much slowed down and people saying that their trash wasn't picked up. So to my awareness, we are caught up with everything. But I, you know, at this point, I must say that the issue has been persisting for a little bit. We're having some problems with hiring in the department because of, you know, how low the salaries are. And again, that's another fiscal concern that we're trying to address in looking over the budget going forward, so.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate you making the commitment to catch up and get us back on the schedule.
Yeah.
But you do know, the salary structure in this city has been below par for a long time. It was only two years ago that the mayor, former mayor Tyler, made some adjustments to at least bring our minimum pay to 1025. The police, I mean, before that, it was almost eight to 10 years that any raises had been given. So we own a, we own a very tight budgetary situation to address all of these, all of these salaries. I mean, there's, I was reviewing some salaries regarding certified personnel versus non-certified personnel. Even those scales are not up to par with what they should be. And I think somewhere, Mayor, maybe the council or the mayor in conjunction with the council could put together some type of task force to look at how, how we can at least make some recommendations on addressing those. But again, how we create the revenue to accommodate that is the issue. But I think we should be fair and open and transparent.
Yeah.
And how we, and how we can do better for our city council. If we're going to, if we're going to be a progressive city, we got to be competitive and competitive means blanket competitiveness.
Yeah. Counselman, I thank you for your willingness to help us solve this problem and all the other council members. I will be with our public waste employees tomorrow morning, bright and early in the morning, to thank them personally for the work that they put in over the weekend. I hate, it's a missed opportunity today. If I was to give out an award, I would award them for working through the weekend to get caught up on that because of the holiday schedule and some other things that jumped in their way and how we got behind. But yeah, it troubles me as a mayor that ran on a platform talking about livable wages when our CDL drivers make $12 an hour. The Domino's Pizza guy who got shot a couple of weeks ago, he was also a city employee having to work a second job because he wasn't making enough money. So it sits heavy on my heart every day and, like I said, I'll be coming to the council about some proposals in the future on how we can remedy that and pay our city employees, you know, a healthy wage to where they can live with some decency.
Okay. And I think that was it. Can you just, Mayor, Mayor Perkins, real quickly, I had a couple of questions about the statement yesterday about the department heads and you, can you just go over that again? You want them to come in or not to come in? Which one was it?
Yeah, so department heads, proposing a new policy to the council, just giving them a heads up that department heads come to work session. Work session, we are very diligent in discussing issues so that I know what department heads need to be present for the city council meetings and they know, so that we don't have them sit through work session and sit through a city council meeting when they can be doing work for the citizens of Shreveport instead. So today, it seemed to have worked great. All of them were standing by their phones throughout the process, so if you did need them or any citizens wanted to address. to address them, they would have responded, uh, and I'd like to keep that going. Like I said, I'd rather than be working for the citizens rather than sitting in the meeting, so.
I agree. So let me, let me, let me, let me, let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, now, oftentimes, concerns of the citizens or the council members, it's not, it's not readily there until the meeting starts, or, and, and sometimes we come in with, uh, questions for department heads. Are you saying, and, and some of them are already in the building we're talking about?
Yeah.
So, you're saying that if, if there's a need arises that you can get them here, or, or we can address it over the phone?
So first, I mean, there's a couple, there's a redundancy, there's a first line of questioning, if myself, myself or the C A O should be able to answer most of these questions. We have our staff meeting on Monday morning to get updates that most of the time have to deal with, uh, any, uh, pressing issues within the city, so, we're here, but yes, uh, we do have them on standby, ready to respond, ready to come down if anything arises abruptly in the, in the meetings, but I would encourage at least the council members, you know, it's up to the citizens if they wanna come to the, the meetings, but I would encourage council members to definitely be diligent in work session so that we know, uh, what department heads need to be present for the city council meetings, uh, at least best prepared for it.
See, all right, um, if there are no other communications, do we have any additional communication?
All right, Mr. Sammy Mears, please state your name and address, you have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport seven one one oh one. Welcome, Mayor Perkins.
Thank you, Sammy.
And to the council, during the year of twenty eighteen, we had too many homicides that went on in Shreveport, and I've gotten, uh, complaints about it from people at the terminal, and they really feel that they need to stop. I said this before, and I feel that maybe I wasn't heard or listened to, but I really feel like I need to be listened to about this. We're in a year, a new year now, it's twenty nineteen, and people are not feeling safe in their homes. It's time to put a stop to all this little nonsense that's been going on with these little tinker toys that people have to fire at each other when they can't have their precious little way. It's ridiculous. Whatever happened to going to court or trying to walk away from a situation? This makes no sense. We need over at Oak Meadows Apartments more patrolling through the day and maybe scheduled and through the night just as well. We had a few gunshots that were being fired at night, and it bothered me and other people that were trying to sleep, and the police were called out, I don't know if they came out or not, but I know that I did call them at least a couple of times. The gunshots and homicides are just so ridiculous, inappropriate, unacceptable, and stupid, and those are the good points. People are not going to put up with it, it's just ridiculous. It needs to end. It's almost like the man who went into a restaurant and ordered eggs benedict, and they were brought to him on a hubcap instead of a plate, and then he asked the waitress, why are these eggs benedict on the hubcap instead of a plate? They look good, but why are they on the hubcap? And she answered, there's no place like chrome for the hollandaise.
Very good.
I got that from Dick Humphries over at Noel Methodist Church, Christmas Eve, I couldn't wait to throw it in.
Thank you, Mr. Mears, Ms. Lauren Wright Anderson.
Just got here, I'm a little frazzled. Lauren Wright Anderson, you need my address?
Please.
Uh, two forty-seven East Lister Street, Shreveport seven eleven zero one. Um, I'm just here to make a, a suggestion, we have this, uh, new hip area in town, they're calling it the Bermuda Triangle, it's close to Centenary and Stoner, I don't know if y'all are familiar with the intersection in particular, that intersection of Centenary and Stoner in particular is very dangerous. Um, there have been many wrecks there, all you need to do is drive past it, and you can see evidence, there's barricades next to the, uh, the cemetery's, um, fences, you can tell where the fences have been knocked down, and all of that basically is due to a blind curve. Heading southbound on Market, as it turns into Centenary, there's a blind curve just north of Stoner. So, when you're heading southbound and you hit Stoner, people come up on that intersection, that stoplight, going like thirty, forty, fifty miles an hour. Vice versa, when they are going northbound, they're gonna head northbound along Centenary as it turns into Market, and they're gonna hit that blind curve, and right after that blind curve is, uh, the Bermuda Triangle, and it's basically a little collection of bars, it's, uh, Strainthru, Ernie's, and, um, Ivans. What the cool kids do is they bar hop around to these three different bars, and in order to do that, you have to cross the dangerous street. So, what do you get when you have a dangerous intersection, a blind curve, and possibly intoxicated people crossing the street? Somebody's gonna get hit. We need a crosswalk and some sort of notice to the drivers, I would suggest some sort of pleasing blinking lights, you know, that there are going to be people crossing the street, you need to be careful, you need to watch out. So, I'm suggesting this to y'all so that you could possibly do something about it before something really bad happens. Um, somebody could lose a life, the city could be slapped with a big lawsuit, but either way that lawsuit turns out, it's not gonna bring back the life, so we have an opportunity right now to basically stop a problem, prevent a problem before it happens. Um, and finally, um, making a city safe is not just about addressing crime, it, there are many, many ways to make a city safe and address the various issues that we have, it's not just about crime. Like I said, it's about preventing a problem before it becomes a problem. That's it. Any questions?
Let me ask, Mr. Chairman, I mean, this is, have, have, have the police been, 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 um, advised on what you just mentioned to us?
I'm not interested in the police, I'm interested in the community working together to protect one another.
Say it again.
I'm not interested in getting the police involvement just now, I'm interested in the community working for the people.
Okay.
The city council may be working to help the people before the police need to be called. I'm sure they have more serious criminal matters to attend to.
I would, and I appreciate your statement, you mentioned a life or death situation or scenario, so...
It's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen, okay, so...
Yeah, there have already been many close calls.
So my, my request is now back to the council president, the chair, and asking him that we will get some information that you mentioned and refer it to the Public Safety Committee.
I've talked to Levitt a bit, a bit about it, congratulations, Levitt, and any of the other people who've been recently elected, congratulations.
We'll, we'll do that. Uh, Councilwoman Fuller.
I think this is a, a great example of where a road diet, traffic study, public safety study would be really beneficial because even when there's not like the heavy nightlife presence, you've got pedestrian traffic in that area, and it used to be even more vibrant when like Centenary Oyster House was open.
It's kinda coming back now.
And it'd be nice to be able to see that area be more vibrant again, but what it's gonna take is slower traffic, crosswalks, but it's not gonna just be crosswalks, there's gonna be other, other obstructions that will slow down that traffic around that curve. So I think there is definitely, is a valid point that you bring up because of the added issues of nightlife and potentially inebriated people, but even in daylight, that's a, an area that we should be worried about the safety, we're more concerned with the safety there. So I thank you for coming today and participating in the civic process.
Oh, and one more thing, I'd just like to note if I still have a little bit of time, um, one of the stories that I forwarded to Ms. Fuller, um, it features, uh, creative or attractive crosswalks, it's possible to make safety pretty, so if maybe we could get like local artists to participate in this, that would be great. Uh, Ms. Fuller, please share with them.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Aura Hart of the Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association. Ms. Hart, before you begin, let me just welcome you, part of Cedar Grove, is in District C, and I've enjoyed getting to know you, and I look forward to working with you in your capacity as a representative of that organization.
Thank you so much.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Aura Hart, I live at sixty-nine eleven Bethany Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven zero six, and I am currently the president for Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association. CARE is our acronym, Cedar Grove affirms real effort. Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association has been in existence for quite some time now, and we have, for the last, at least the last twelve years, we have felt that we were just totally neglected. As of this term, election term, I realized that it was not necessarily neglect from our councilmen, it was because we did not really understand what power we really had just by living in Cedar Grove, because we are the one district that has not one council person, but we have four. So, we will never just call one council person when we've got a problem in Cedar Grove, we will call B, we will call C, we will call D, and we will call F. It is time for us to stop just cleaning up our backyards because that's where we have our, all of our parties, we need to clean up our front yard because this is what is seen when people drive into our city. We no longer want to see, be one little part where, well, I'll call, uh, Councilman Nicholson, no, Cedar Grove will call all of its councilmen. We are grateful for Mr. Green who hit the ground running, and, and, and a problem that we've been looking at for years, trying to get something done about the light on the corner of West eighty-fourth Street and St. Vincent. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you, I appreciate this opportunity, I appreciate all of you who came to our forum, we look forward to being able to call you. Our, uh, meeting night is the first Tuesday of each month, we would like to see you, we would like to call you with all of our concerns, and we would like to work totally together with this city council.
Ms. Hart, thank you so much, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Ms. Hart, is the mayor invited too, or only city council members?
She have the mayor's number?
Yes, sir.
That's my old neighborhood, so I wanna come to.
And after coming to the meeting on yesterday, I was concerned about time, but after coming to the meeting yesterday and meeting the fire chief and meeting different people, we are concerned, I asked someone a question once, and it was, what comes first, poverty or crime? I know we've got our eyes totally, uh, focused on crime, but there is a proverb that says, Lord, don't let me be so rich that I forget that I need you, but don't let me be so poor that I become a thief and disgrace you. So when we look at Cedar Grove, we don't want to be so big as a city that we neglect the areas that are needed, that need your help the most, and we take care of those that don't need your help at all.
Yeah.
So, come, we're going to invite you, we're gonna expect that this body will become an integral part of making Cedar Grove a community that is desirous to live in. We have a T-shirt that says, Cedar Grove by choice. We don't live there because we couldn't go someplace else, we live there because we love our community.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hart.
I had one, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hart, I did have Councilman, uh, Butcher that wanted to, uh, speak.
When is your next...
But I do wanna speak.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
When is your next meeting?
Well, our next meeting is tonight, but I think that that's gonna be a big work session for us, so, you will all get, if we have your email address, you will get a notice, so we can get on your calendars, so you will know what our agenda is and when our meeting is.
Thank you.
Ms. Hart, I, um, that was gonna be my question, do you, you send out notices, emails, things like that, do y'all have a Facebook, uh, Neighborhood Association? Um, I find that that's good in a lot of areas, that you have a Facebook that, that we can kinda monitor if there's concerns. I've talked to two or three people, uh, about some property standard issues over there already, over around Fairfield and eighty-second, eighty-third, I forwarded, uh, sent those to Mr. Green today, and then some pothole issues, you know, throughout the neighborhoods, but is there, is there a Facebook forum of any kind?
That's coming, we're working on that, as I said, we're having a work session tonight, and we are, for a while, we have been senior citizens in this Neighborhood Association. We are just garnering, uh, the young people to come in and do the electronics for us, the technology part. So, we are working on that, and you will be getting something before our next meeting, letting you know exactly what's going on with us.
I think, I think...
Anything that we need to share with you, as a matter of fact, if, if not waiting until the next meeting, just give us a call, I think everybody, all of you have my number, and just give me a call, and we'll make sure that we do a ride along, we do a walkthrough, whatever, and so we can show you the pain of our heart there in Cedar Grove.
I think, um, I, I think I told you this, I, I grew up, I went to Captain Shreve, I, lots of friends that lived in the Cedar Grove neighborhood over, over years. Um, I think my first, uh, when I started this, I went to a forum that we had at the A B Palmer Park, uh, about the police department, the District, the District Six meeting there. Um, does the neighborhood feel like that having those on a quarterly or a, maybe, you know, every, uh, every six months basis, would that be a good thing for us to do? Um, where you bring everybody involved, like the police chief, the fire chief, the mayor, uh, public works, all together, maybe once, you know, uh, that's just something I've been brainstorming with, would, would the Neighborhood Association like that?
Well, certainly. Uh, when we first started, that is what we would do, once every three months, or once every four months, or as soon as we could get it all together, we would have the mayor out and have, uh, community development and that kinda thing, and somewhere, we got lost in the shuffle.
Well, do, do this for me, um, at your meeting tonight, let's plan something maybe for the March or April, where we can bring all the players to the table, um, you know, by that time, hopefully the mayor will have appointed his, his, you know, public works, and we can have everybody there at the table, because I agree, I mean, you ride through Cedar Grove, and there are numerous issues over there, property standards, and, so, um, I want, uh, I want your voice to be heard, so if you could do that, I would appreciate it. Uh, maybe talk to your association, let's, let's try to plan something towards March or April, when everybody's in place to get, not to say that I'm not gonna come to your other meetings, but it would be nice to get all the council members that represent the district and the mayor, police chief, fire chief, all together.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Marjorie Burns.
Good afternoon, ma'am. I'm Marjorie Burns, and I do live, have lived for two years at twenty-eleven Audubon Place, I have property at two-three-two Albert Avenue, which also has a city sewer lying, running all the way through my backyard. Um, at the, uh, there's also a manhole right at the corner of the lot, there's been a lot of work done on this, it's been for two years now, it's the reason I'm here, Mr. Mayor, and everyone, I know this is a new situation for everybody, but for me, it's been going on a long time. Uh, I am very familiar with this building, I have talked to many people in it, I have visited with them, uh, I've had people come out, give me cards, and then I was told, oh, everyone was supposed to speak to them. Uh, the sewer line has been dug up at least six times, starting with the city to begin with, and then it went to Mitchell. I, I have all sorts of details, and I know y'all don't wanna hear them out, Mr. Thompson, good to see you. Mr. Thompson, good to see you. I used to come to council meetings a long time ago, when I was younger. But it really is at a stopping point right now. I pay taxes, and I've paid nearly $3,000 in taxes on that property this year. I did that last year. I have the utility zone, and so I pay out that money. Y'all, I need something done. I gave, I owned the lot at 226 Albert, too, and I gave a foot of land, so that there were two fences over the manhole. There are holes started coming close to that manhole, and about 213, and it took a good while to get somebody to come out, and I was told it was probably an animal, a little animal, going through there digging those holes. And I said, no, they burrow, they don't dig holes. But anyway, I really don't know how the sewer system works. I don't pretend to do that. But I figure part of the problem is trying to attach or connect metal pipes to, to clay pipes, and of course, they were all clay pipes. But I really need something done.
Ms. Burns, why don't we pass this over to administration? And I'll give them your information. Is this your, this the address, is your 232 Albert is what we're talking about?
I've got all sorts of notes here of what's been done.
Okay. We can get, I'll get this information over to them, and this is a good number for you, phone number that's on the, your request?
868-4867.
We will get this over to them, and somebody will contact you and try to address what you have.
I appreciate, like I said, I've talked to a lot of people, and I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I even, Mr. Nicholson, when you were running, I was at the Baltimore Neighborhood Meeting, and a question I asked was, how will you find out about sewer situation if you're elected? So, it, I really do need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Good to hear all of you. I haven't done this for a long time, but it is interesting.
Good to see you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Chairman, I'd just like to address Ms. Marjorie. So, we talked yesterday in work session about trying to engage, because a lot of people are cutting into not just the sewer system right now, but potentially, who could have dug in your yard, or the people doing the consent decree work, some private engineering firm contractors, our own water and sewer department. We have utility companies, so right now, there's a lot of people that can do construction work in our city, and only the city entities have to do the direct reporting to the city. So, sometimes, we don't even know what's going on. Our proposal, and the city engineer is sitting over there, Mr. Patrick Furlong, our proposal... Yeah. His mail? Okay. So, you already know him. Yeah. So, our proposal is to, when negotiating and talking to the utility companies who aren't reporting to the city where they're doing construction work, is to try to get them to start reporting where it is, and we can try to give our citizens more notice about those things.
I've got most places coming to Mitchell.
Mitchell?
Yes, I do, to Mitchell.
Okay.
As I understand, like I said, I've talked to lots of people, I've paid cards to the Lord.
Mm-hmm. Well, we hear you loud and clear. We will be on it. Thank you for coming to speak to us today. Over.
Cedric Murphy.
Is that Mike close to him? The mic on the, the lower mic? Yes, talking to that, Mr. Murphy, if you please.
Thank you. Chairman Bowman and City Councilman, I'm going to present a presentation concerning disability inclusion. And you'll see where we headed, uh-oh, you see where we headed toward the future. Okay? I think I'm ready? Yeah. Check this out. Julia Bay was a friend of mine. She died in 2013 at a cross street of Jordan, at a cross street of Jordan and Crestwell. A driver was coming toward the stop sign, said he looked both ways, did not see her, made a right turn, ran her over, and killed her. And all she was just trying to do was cross the street. I talked with Chief Raymond, because her case was closed, calling it exceptional clearance. Exceptional clearance indicates the investigation is closed and no further action is necessary. At the corner of Jordan and Crestwell, there were four witnesses that said it was an unavoidable accident, but four people saw her. The driver didn't, and they closed the case, saying there was no further action. Sam's parking lot, an older lady, 93 years old, for some reason, got, was behind an individual's car. Individual came to his car, got in it, backed up, ran her over, and she's dead. I pulled the report, there were no witnesses written in the report, for which I'm sure there were people there. Sam, I'm sure, had video cameras. The cultural sensitivity of police officers investigating individuals that involve wheelchairs needs to be trained, there needs to be some type of awareness from us in the community, because this is just wrong. Two people.
Mr. Murphy, let me, let me say how sorry I am for the loss of your friend, and thank you very much for your presentation this afternoon.
My time's up?
Your three minutes are up, yes, sir. Unless a member of the council has a question of you or the mayor.
Could I ask you to show one more? Please?
Mr. Chairman, I move for two-minute extension.
Okay. This shows where the handicap parking spaces are being abused by people, whereas we can't access them. This is the last one I wanted to actually show. The end of the law pedestrian states that includes someone walking or someone with a mobility aid. The person that has the legs, she's walking. The person in the wheelchair is stuck, we're confused, don't know what to do, can't cross the street just to go shopping or just to get somewhere. And I'm just trying to explain to you guys, disability inclusion is something that we need on all facets of going forward, all facets of us coming out, because you really don't see people in wheelchairs going anywhere. I do. I go everywhere. And that these problems are happening, and then people can't realize that, because they're not in my shoes. I'm not going to lock myself in the house, and I don't want to be classified as a second class citizen. And last, the minority, the people with disabilities is the fourth largest minority group, but it's not acknowledged. But things are changing. And I want to thank you guys for your time, and I'm sorry for getting emotional, but please include us, please help us, and please acknowledge us.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Murphy, let me, let me acknowledge you for your advocacy for the disabled, you know, your, your presence here over the last several months at the city council, bringing to their attention some of the disadvantages that you, that you, that you, that you suffer in those similar to you, in your condition. But you have brought to our attention a whole lot. You brought to the stated DOTD I saw in a television interview last week, I think with Channel 3 News, where you were showing them some, some challenges that you was in, and others with your, with your disabilities was incurring. I think they made a commitment that they're going to try to make curbs and curvings in places where wheelchair-bound individuals frequent. But I also wanted you to know that, to see, it's very much enlightened on a lot of, a lot of the things that you brought to our attention. But your advocacy and your one-man thrust of, of moving in this direction is going to pay off big time. Thank you for this presentation, as well was enlightening, and I think, again, we can be more conscious of those that are less, less mobile than we are. So, thank you for coming down again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Craig Lee.
Want to thank all of you guys, welcome you guys, the new ones, to the council. Mayor Perkins. Want to start out by saying thank you for acknowledging the city worker that Mayor Tyler did not want to recognize, who was actually murdered. And that became a big contention at one of the last meetings of the year, because of what Mayor Perkins said. I know you guys want to focus on police and fire, and that's good that they need to be increased, but as Councilman Bradford talked about, we have other important departments as well, sanitation, water. And the big issue, and it was brought up shortly here, about revenue generation. We're down to 191,000 people at this stage in the ballgame. When I moved here in 1994, we were a little bit above 200,000. The stagnating issues for the city of Shreveport still remain 24 years later, racism, white supremacy. That goes into contract procurement opportunities and into culture diversity. These are the two issues that plague all of the other issues that you, you have. I'm so proud of my coalition partner Cedric Murphy and his advocacy for the disabled. That's absolutely wonderful. That has never happened in the 24 years that I've been here, and I doubt if it's ever happened since then. But, but Mayor, we're going to be committed to helping you grow the population of the city of Shreveport, because if you don't grow the population of the city of Shreveport, your tax base is limited. And within growing that tax base, I'm glad my good partner Donald Hobbie is here, representing the Minority Contractors Association. We're going to push for contract equity within the fair share department, because the two departments that, where the money flows, fair share and purchasing, there has to be major changes in these particular departments. Come June or July, we're going to bring forth my second report that I haven't brought forth since 2001, and that was the first statistical analysis that was ever done in the entire United States based on contract procurement opportunities. We're going to bring that forth in June, July, to show you where we're at 18 years later. So, with that, I thank you guys, and I definitely thank my good partner Councilman Bradford, because after 20 years, we finally got the disparity study passed, but now we need that budget amended, so that we can now get that funded, so we can move forward expeditiously on a good note. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lee, I want to clear, make it clear that you didn't move to Shreveport, you moved back to Shreveport in 1994.
Yeah, back to Shreveport.
Yeah, homegrown, went to school here at Fair Park, Xavier, so, but thank you for coming down.
Absolutely.
Mrs. John Glover.
John Glover, 8100 Heinz Road, Apartment 3G, Shreveport, Louisiana, ZIP Code 71129. Happy New Year to all of you all, to our new council persons, our new mayor alike. I just have one concern. When I'm sitting in the audience, trying to hear what you all are conversing between each other, it's very hard to do so. So, may you please take it upon yourselves to come to the mic, so that we can hear, so that we will be a part of what you all are talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is that, let me ask, because Councilman, and I've never really had been told that I couldn't be heard, but Councilman Florrie said he, is that, is that a technological issue? Is that something within the, in the system speaker?
You'd like to ask the mayor, I don't know nothing about technology.
Is that, is there?
I can't answer that right now, but we'll have IT look at it. We'll check the acoustics afterwards.
It's difficult when you're sitting out there. It's difficult to hear what.
You can't hear.
Right. I mean, and I don't know if maybe if you get closer, it gets better. I, I don't.
Like, everybody?
Yeah, everybody. It's hard to hear.
We can't have that.
Have your, have your IT team look at that.
We will.
All right, finally, Mr. John Settle.
John Settle, for Tealwood. I helped Mr. Murphy get in today, and I didn't realize it, but the automatic door to City Hall that would accommodate him, the button's not working. I think he reported that yesterday, and that's something that I wouldn't think about, but I think about more now after talking to Mr. Murphy. I just wanted to commend the council, and especially the mayor, on the new attitude of transparency. I attended the mayor's first press conference on the 29th at 11:30. Was refreshing. He promised regular press conference. He promised an information officer, Mr. Riggs, I forget his exact title, who would respond, and department heads that could respond. I nearly fell out of my chair. I've actually sent some emails to department heads this week and gotten answers within a couple of hours, and it's refreshing. I may have to lay off a staff person who always handled those public records requests. I used to have them stacked up, and would have to remind Will Bradford time and time again to get answers. Seriously, it's a good, it's a good approach to government. I think it's very helpful. I have a column Friday on SPAR, some of the challenges SPAR with our budget, did we have too many parks? I have a column on, on Sunday about the garbage collection issues, and I have a column on Tuesday about proposed chief technology officer. And a lot of the information was one I've done on my own. City workers have, employees have provided answers to me. I'm looking forward to us having a more efficient government and dealing with the realities of a limited budget that we have got. Y'all, everyone has to shrink in to get more services. But I think you're off to a great start. This is your leader, and y'all are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. We did have a late cumbre. I think in the, in the future, I don't know where Mr. Albert was earlier, but we, we'll allow you to speak today, but normally, it's a cutoff time for putting these requests in, but we'll, come on up, Mr. Brown. State your name, your name and address.
I was out there trying to help somebody.
All right.
First, Happy New Year to all of y'all.
Happy New Year to you.
Mr. Mayor, Chairman, City Councilman. I, I'm here back concerned about...
Mr. Brown, would you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Albert Brown, 439 East 81st Street. Shreveport, Louisiana. All right. I got a couple of concerns, just real quick. I know I knew, I met him at the, when he, we did the runoff and everything, and give you enough time to get in here and get your feet wet. Yes, sir. And everything. But, but do have concerns about that Limwood that y'all kept telling me y'all was going to handle it, and it's getting worse there. Because, I mean, when I ride down there, I'm like, uh-uh, this guy, you know, Limwood, you know, from the south end and then the west end, over in that corner, it's getting worse there.
What, Limwood and, what's the intersection?
Hmm?
Limwood and...
He's speaking from I-49 toward, no, 3132 going toward Limwood. Yeah.
Towards Bercoons?
Yes, going toward Bercoons.
So, Calvary Baptist and that?
Yes, right in there. Well, no, coming back a little further. Coming back a little further. That way.
Okay.
And then one on that other end, over there by Save, Save-A-Lot over there. It is just ridiculous. You know? I mean, we got, you know, guys, you know, I understand, we just... I mean, we got, you know, guys, you know, I understand, we just, you know, you ate your turkey and everything, you know, dressing, but, but, you know, we, we asking you all to do something about that, because our cars and trucks and everything. And I know you all have to ride down there, too, you know? Now, Ms. Whala, the lady that does the, uh, Department Center, she's doing a great job. She's been working with me, trying to get those different, uh, hou, homes towed out of there, Cedar Grove and everything, but we asking, you know, you all, and I know Ms., she just came up a few minutes ago, and, uh, but, uh, you know, I'm with the BIC because I care ministry, I, I used to work with them, but, uh, I still, you know, be a part of it. And I'm asking that we come, like I say, I know you got to get your feet wet and everything, but, uh, but, and I thank you for this minutes that you gave me to come up and, and talk, but we asking you all to, uh, you know, we're going to work with you, you know, and Mr. Bradford, you know, you know, you know me, I'll come out and, you know, do all I can do, but we asking you all that you come on in, and Mr. Florrie, you know, you all, you know, you know me, you, you know. And, uh, then out there on 73rd, like I said, some of the people calls me, and I ride out and I go out there and see how that back alley that needs to be done, and a ditch need to be done right there on 73rd, because the, the water's not flowing. It's not flowing right. It's, it's, it's just ridiculous, you know, and then the, you know, so we asking you all to come. I know you, like I said, you got to get everything done. Thank you so much for the time that I've gotten with you, you know, and like I say, I'll be able to meet with the new councilmen's and everything, and be able to work with you, and Mr. Mayor, be able to work with you. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
All right. Mr. Brown, we have, uh, Councilman Florrie.
Mayor Perkins, I believe if you'll check, that, uh, Linwood that he's referring to, its money's there, for some reason or another, that stopped, uh, but it's listed on the streets of improvement. So, I believe if you'll check that funding is there. I don't know why it got held up. Uh, just a short strip that he's talking about, we did...
Oh, another strip?
Yes, sir. I believe the funding is there, the Mayor will check, his administration will check with it, but it's there, but we just, some reason or another, we did that part from the Calvary, and it stopped, and so I'm not sure, but it's listed on the streets to do, so I'm not sure why it stopped.
Yeah, because it seemed like you did that end, and then, then come back this way.
Well, they're looking to it and see what it is. I know that's the first phase was from, um, Burcun's to 3132, and then the second phase was to come from 3132 up to Linwood, so, uh, we'll just find out and let you know.
All right.
All right.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I say no further public comments, and move that we enter executive session pursuant to prior notice.
All right. There's no...
Well, let's get some directions, because I think she wanted...
We need to adjourn this meeting. The next meeting is a, a special meeting, and then we have an agenda there.
Uh, my apologies. Mr. Thompson whispered some instructions to me, but I misheard them. I'll do better next time.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, we are going into, uh, well, if there's nothing else, we're going to a special meeting, uh, afterwards, but, uh, if there's nothing else, then this City Council meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Chair.